I apologize, Lord. I will scratch your seven, Father, and Lord, thank you for this day, and thank you for the blessings of life that you do grant us from our soul to ours. And Lord, just thank you for that as a wake up. Lord, we breathe and breath life today. Lord, we thank you for your gift of salvation. You got to die on the cross for our sins. I just pray for the sick, dear God, I just ask if you just give them the most wanted help that they got a will. Lord, just comfort the families that have lost loved ones and their broken heart. Lord, I just ask that you guide us as we conduct business through, Lord. That, dear Lord, that you add us wisdom and knowledge and understanding, and we handle this meeting, dear God, in a pleasing manner of doing. And Lord, we seek you and your guidance, see the world over ours and the ways of the world. Lord, forgive us our mistakes, and bless these lives, and Jesus bless your name.
Come here. Thank you, Dave.
This woman started on the gentleman's behalf. I forgot her name, I'm sorry. Chairwoman. Lord. She was here to discuss the garbage field, is that right?
Yes.
And she had, she had a, something she would like to say about the garbage.
I just want to let you go right ahead.
Right.
My garbage field actually was one, which is my maiden name. But my garbage has never been picked up until I got with Mr. Stevens. In October, I believe it was. I used to put this all the time, but I got to, I had to take my garbage somewhere else. When I called the number on here, they gave me another number to call with, with the shop. I never could get a hold of anybody. My garbage was three hundred and fifty-one dollars, this was in November. I couldn't find my recent bill. Um, I didn't see if there's some way I can get some of this knocked off. But I was having to pay to take my garbage somewhere else, I would never pick it up. Until, I didn't know who to talk to. I finally got hold of Mr. Stevens, I don't know if you remember talking to me at the courthouse. And they finally started picking my garbage up. And when I called these people, they said that I had to come see you guys, or they said I had to talk to these other people, and I gave you a number, which was to the shop. I called the shop, I don't know how many times. And then I finally got the people at the courthouse to tell me who I needed to talk to. And they said that I would have to come before the board to see if you guys could help me out with this field.
You know what I'm talking about? All, all, only what she just said, it wasn't being picked up, because I got the baby.
It hadn't been getting picked up. Is it like on a route and we just didn't pick it up?
No, he said it wasn't even there, she was taking it somewhere else at the time, correct?
I was taking it somewhere else at the time, because I have five to seven bags of garbage, if not more, a week. And I couldn't leave it all on the road, because we have cats and dogs and all that out there. It would pick up across from the road from me, they'd pick up my mother in, which was beside me, they'd pick up down the road. They never would pick mine up, and I always had it at the end of the drive. So I just started taking it somewhere else, and I have for years. Because I couldn't get a hold of anybody with Union County, because every time I would call the number on here, they would tell me to call another number, and it was to the shop every time.
So where do you live exactly? Are you close to county line anywhere?
I live on County Road one sixty-three, I am, well, I'm in Union County. Tippecary County's not far, but I live, I live no peace for Mr. Stevens, so...
She lives in my district, on sixty-four. But my understanding was you was taking it somewhere else anyway, but you did take it to the road, and it was left?
I started taking it to the road, when, I paid this bill for years, I've lived there for seven years, so, I mean, I paid this bill. And then I had to start taking it somewhere else. So I had to pay for it. And Tippecary County was closer to me, so I took it there, because I don't even know where the waste dump is in Union County. So, I would call and call, I didn't know who to talk to. It doesn't say on here who to talk to, I didn't know. So that's why I didn't call you, because I didn't know who to call. And finally, they told me at the courthouse, this is the last time that I went up there, that I needed to talk to you, and you just happened to be standing in the other room.
Like I say, my understanding was you was taking it somewhere else.
I was taking it somewhere.
I didn't know that you had left somewhere to road, and it wasn't got, I didn't understand that part.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, how many times did you break the road, and it was missed, and it wasn't picked up?
Well, I don't know, because before I started taking it somewhere, it was being left. And so I would just get it and take it, I used to take it down to like, um, over by the school where Hank's is in Tippecary County, I would take it to their dumpster.
Do you need your name and number again? I had a note of it, and I had it on, I'm checking phones.
It's okay.
Do you need your name and number again? Let me check on it some more, and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
Is that for the full year?
This is for several years.
It's like three years.
This is several years. And I've lived there for like seven years.
Have you been getting the bill this whole time?
I have, and I was paying it. Up until, I was like, if I've got to pay to take it somewhere else, I can't pay this bill and pay to take it somewhere too.
Were you having to pay to take it to Tippecary County?
Yes. If I take it to the, um, I would have to pay him to use his dumpster.
I'd like to know why, you know, why if it was out there, why we wouldn't pick it up?
I wish you had done it. I wish you had been out there sooner, too.
Well, I didn't know who to talk to. I mean, I'm just being honest, I honestly did not know who to talk to. I asked everybody, who do I talk to, who do I talk to, who do I talk to? And everybody kept telling me to call this number, when I would call the number, it would be to the shop, and I would leave my name.
Who we need to talk to, who we need to talk to, they would shop. But you call the shop and leaving a message, we need to be calling you back if you're leaving a message.
I never got a message, I've never got a call back when I left a message. Because I didn't know who to talk to.
Well, my friend, he's down, he's down the job. But he's down the route, you have to fix it, she's up, that's actually one of the time that I call. All right, your name and number, please.
Chairwoman Lowey. Two six six. Three six, six zero.
I know where you live, let me, let me do some checking, and I'll get back to you.
Okay.
And I'll, I mean, see what we can do.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ready to get started? We've got some bids for the counties to call.
We have three bids we received from B and A Bank, Renovate Bank, and Bank of Texas. That's all state. And we have a few couple of patients who we advertised received the bids.
This is a bid from William and Matt. That offers for the period January first, two thousand twenty, through December thirty-first, uh, a fixed rate of one point three one percent. Or two? One point three one? Yeah. One point three one percent for two years, that'd be twenty, uh, twenty and twenty-one on our checking accounts. All deposits and floors are FDIC insured, and they have provided, uh, some sheets about the letter of account. This is a bid from Renovate Bank. For the period February first, two thousand twenty, through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Um, the proposal includes a fixed interest rate of one point three seven percent for that time period. Renovate has also proposed they will not charge a service fee on public fund accounts in the name of Union County. Fees will not be charged on retirement deposit items, overdrafts, stop payments. ACH origination services they are going to provide. Online banking, just like B and A. Safe deposit box, and no fee. There's not bank, five hundred fifty dollar annual allowance to request checks or deposits. There's quite a, I mean, there's just a, there are items in this proposal. The main part being the one point three seven percent, I would think, that would be a contribution to y'all. And then Bank Corp South. Bank Corp South has offered a fixed rate of one point two three percent for two years, beginning January twenty-first, two thousand twenty. Agrees to waive all monthly fees, except for credit card processing. So that's your three bids.
Three bids. What we'll do is accept all bids, and we'll accept all bids. Second. All of there? All of you. Kim Bro, we use them for spraying our sides of the road, so when he's approving contracts with the... Motion by Steve. Second. Second by Chad, all in favor? Motion here. Ray Collins has served OGN, she's coming over for the last few years, and, um, time to report someone there, and he says he will continue to do so. You got like reports for Ray Collins?
How much emotion would he give?
Motion by Chad. Second. Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of adopting four-year road plan, including a certification and inspection report. Something we have to do every time, be four-year road plan. I might move. Motion by Chad. Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion here.
You were getting a motion, huh? Did you just sign your name right? This is your, um, certificate. Sound all right? There.
I'm off.
I do?
Next, we have approval of December two thousand nineteen budget report. I haven't seen it yet. You got a copy of it?
I don't have, I left it on the desk. That's for each department. I, it looks, yes, it looked, it looked yours. There weren't any price changes or increases.
Yeah. Good to me. I'm about to go very expensive, I mean, more. Motion by Steve. I'm ready to move. Motion by Steve. Second by CJ, all in favor? Approval of grant acceptance with C H P U twenty nineteen. Direct for the courthouse and jail, we share for a hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred sixty dollars. And forty-nine thousand one hundred forty dollars will be our match on that total of two hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. Put new roof on the old jail, and some more improvements to the courthouse. Motion by Steve. Second, second by Chad, all in favor? Motion here.
Mr. President, is that an archaic history grant, or?
Yes. Just like twenty percent match for us, which is really good deal for us. The old, old jail, they're needing a new roof. Uh, approval of travel for county ministerate for grant bees. Mr. Johnson, I guess.
Yeah, that's your priority, that grant above. There it was.
Motion by Steve.
Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of large stormwater permit application from your number. You got a bunch of numbers. County Route, County Route forty-six, bridge replacement and approach, is that?
Is that right?
Yeah.
Trying to get ready to take these. I thought board too. Took reasons.
Would you like to make a motion on that?
Yeah, sure.
Motion by Dave.
All right, man.
Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion here.
Ray, you have three places where you sign.
I'll take it, Sam. Put that number back, long there.
The top one. And all three of them the same side.
All by, yeah.
All three of them the same.
Chad, is that, Tallahatchie or something?
Hey, you know, we've been done, Tallahatchie.
Is that a problem?
Yes, it's next to the river. And you know, that sort of, you know, kind of put a curve in, and, and then, we didn't have enough money to leave it left over, so we're stretching the curve out in the past. I think we're gonna take the, um, fix it one bridge and leave the road open, this is the plan. And then, when we get to the last bridge, jerking it, we'll reopen, just like. That's, that's the plan, if you want.
All right, Ray.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
That's right, that's right.
Approval of free and formal record document for two thousand fourteen, Union County solidware.
I'm, he was a scuttleballer. What, you're a scuttleballer?
Wasn't this Lowey talking about, didn't we?
It's probably not a bid, because I think...
They're probably gonna keep them registered.
The one that's just been paid at home.
I'll make a motion. Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here. Well, sadly, there's more to this store, once you kind of do the best you can. Approval of renivorce for repealed justice court case. You have another story on that?
This is, yes.
Is this one of those last ones?
No, this is a new one. This is a new, yes, this is another one. Um, that Marissa has submitted, a gentleman had pled guilty, uh, to a fine, and, I mean, to a charge, he was fined, and then he went to circuit court, he had, he appealed it, and the judge dismissed it. So he has to be reimbursed a total of four hundred seventy, four seventy-seven, one seventy-one.
I see that.
Yes, you may.
Okay. Make a motion for refund, this man.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Chad.
I'm sorry.
Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of travel lodging for Brett Wigger to a ten C one, one oh two, basic cyber investigations course, February nineteenth through twenty-first, in Hossal, Alabama. Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of longevity increase for Jefferson County Dispatch and Sheriff's Department.
Motion to plead.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by CJ. All in favor? Motion here. I, I need help, you know. Approval of notices for increasing assessments and petitions for reduction of assessment. Playing that.
This is the county that has that. These are, these, what I did, the land row, back in the fall, and then, um, taxpayers come and ask questions, and we go back and look, and there may be mapping errors, clerical errors that we have on that side of the assessment. Uh, it may be that we've sent a tax bill for, um, property, for a house, or shed, and that had been torn down, so when they can show the date that it was torn down, we can take that off. So those are some of the changes that have to be made to the L S O. Thank goodness, even though that increase stat is smaller than the decrease.
Sure.
Increase is smaller. There they are, and you'll have to sign them all of these. That we used within that half of the menu.
Well, if you got my, you said you had...
That's right, you had my, you mean, you?
Yep.
That's why you're back to big books, all right. Good.
And if you want to know the importance of technology and that everybody working, one of the keys on the keyboard was not working, and a lot of those mistakes are from that keyboard not working.
Really? You need to keep better equipment up there now.
I'm telling you, we got to. Not all of them, it was just errors, um, kind of...
I'm gonna take these under vice until my stamp comes in, and I got order. I guess I'll need, uh...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion.
Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by CJ. All in favor? Motion here. Approval of contract between Union County Ward Supervisors and Union County Clerk for programming voting machines.
That's what you signed, it's nothing new, it's just with government, and we just have to do it, the election is coming up. And I did probably during nine, y'all, those first things that we changed, and now we get some signs, bring it, the election is March the tenth.
March the tenth.
So it's coming for trick.
I think, I think I did some signs, where probably all the changing locations, put vote here, you know, a different...
We've done, but I hear signs, but I mean, like at West Union, I was thinking you might want to put something...
Says you're saying...
Change the voting precinct?
I don't think before y'all got with, or Evan, when he changed, he got with Jerry Burke, and had some pretty...
Y'all was at East Union, it's good, probably needs to say something, you know, voting precinct has been moved to Ellis Town about a church. Put out there. You know, and you're, you're gonna put your vote here lines up around the church like you would have at the school anyway. That's probably something that I'd say, but I won't say, man, so we need to probably get somebody to make us one.
Whatever y'all would like to do, I think that would be great.
Thank you. I think that would be a great idea. Oh. Motion by Steve. Second by Sam, all in favor? Motion here. Approval of state manager reimbursement rate of zero point five seven five, effective January first, twenty twenty.
Has to change the rough matrix.
Right.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by CJ. Second, second by Chad, all in favor? Motion here. I thought we done, I mean...
My own thing?
Yeah. They changed it more than...
It's bigger, it's...
I'll work down it, because I thought we could really done it like in January.
Just started.
I mean, the first part of the...
One month ago.
I'm sorry, I'm, 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 I thought we did the last meeting, and they have to make sure. Because Amanda said this time we've updated, uh, she got, and she said it is decrease.
I was saying at some point, I thought it was a change.
Maybe it changed like in December or something, but I just thought it was like two weeks ago, her budget.
I think the last time, it was fifty-two, it was whatever. It changes. It's very odd.
It was fifty-eight?
Yeah.
It dropped.
It was fifty-eight, it was dropped.
It was fifty-five, I'm sure.
I remember seeing, I remember seeing fifty-four, and then it was fifty-eight. Yeah, that's fifty, that's fifty seven, man.
Well, come on, man.
I have to have it on the list for January, of course, making it in January, so I think, and we saw, maybe it changed to fifty-eight back in, later in the year. I think that's what it is.
So, it's been a long, I've seen this, it's...
Because it was fifty-eight, fifty-eight, I said.
Approval of new enforcement of Richard Kitty and shop mechanic for road department, beginning January twenty-first, twenty twenty. Motion by Sam.
Second.
Second by Chad, all in favor? Motion here.
You're staying up, sir.
Yeah. Something wrong, man? My bad. If y'all gonna get ready to make plate, then why sign all these? Y'all gonna get ready to make lists, then why sign all these? I think we should get a timer in your computers, we got a list with a key, to call the meat.
That was just too fragile.
So somebody else made all these mistakes?
It's just different, I mean, some are from the map, some are from, um, the taxpayer didn't even notice that something had changed that we didn't know of, so. Make sure you saw that top stack there.
Kimmy or Justin, y'all got anything? Baron? Need to get up and tell us something. Here. Anybody else? So we need a motion to adjourn to Monday, February.
Sir.
Motion by Chad.
I'm sorry.
Second by CJ, all in favor? Motion here.